And good evening, you are listening to Rochelle Wilson here at WHGE 95.3 FM. Tonight, we are tuned in to the Political Power Hour. And my guest this evening is the incumbent County Council President, Ms. Karen Hartley-Nagel. Welcome, Ms. Nagel. Welcome, Karen, to the show. And thank you so much for being here with us this evening. So, we've got a lot of hot topics that we want to talk about. I want to say thank you for being here. I realize that you could be anywhere in the world, but you were spending your time here with us at WHGE. Okay, so, thank you so much. Thank you, yes. I am live.
Can I put, can I hug and a bow hello? I'm Harmon, y'all.
Yes, on my live show. I had that music going for a purpose.
Just go ahead and play, but just turn it.
Okay. Well, how's that for getting your show started? Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us here at the Political Power Hour again. I am Rochelle Wilson, and joining me this evening is County Council President, Ms. Karen Hartley-Nagel. Welcome to the show. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and it is an honor Rochelle to be here. I thank you so much for inviting me.
Yes, ma'am.
And I want to give Rochelle it to Harmon Carey, who also called me and asked me when I'd be on the show.
Yes.
And he and I have worked together on quite a few issues over the years.
Okay, yes. Well, when he told me that he had invited you, I was a little taken aback because I have the calendar, and I had to rearrange some things to make it happen. But I'm very glad to have you here. I'm glad that he was able to get you into the studio. So, this is wonderful. And I just want to start off, this is just kind of get to know the candidates, you know, giving people an opportunity to just find out a little bit more about who you are, straight from you. You know, not hearsay and what they heard, but to get your perspective, your side of the story. So, let's start with just the basics. So, you live in where? You live in Delaware, obviously.
I live in North Wilmington, right off of Philadelphia Pike, almost right next to St. Helena's Church.
Okay.
Just a couple houses down from there.
So, how long have you been here?
I have been here in Delaware, let's see, oh, I'm dating myself, since I was 28, and I am 58.
Okay.
For quite some time. And so, I've been, you know, up in Newcastle. I lived in all three counties.
Okay.
And I was married and had my children in Kent County.
Okay.
I lived down the beach for a while, and that was really great.
Yes.
Someone asked me to come up and take a job up in Newcastle County.
Okay.
Which I did, and so, I have been back up here since 2007.
Okay.
So, it's been quite a while that I've been here, and I have four children.
Okay.
Between, the youngest is 21, her name is Catherine. Let's see, Kami is 23 now, TJ 24, and Brittany is 30.
Wow.
And she has been married seven years, and has had my first grandchild.
Congratulations, right? Spoils, 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 spoils.
She's adorable, oh my gosh.
Yes, it's going to be a spoil situation, anything she wants, you can always tell. That's what's coming next. And so, that sounds very wonderful. You have a strong family life, you're close with your children, you get along well with them, and they realize you're in politics. How long have you been in politics of their lives? Did they grow up with you being in politics?
No, in fact, I really never envisioned myself originally in politics at all. And I became a child advocate for some various reasons. And over the, between 2004, 2006, 2006 and '08, I ran for US Congress. In 2008, I won the Democratic primary.
Okay.
And then ran against Mike Castle. So, in the primary, I got 55% of the vote in a three-way race. And I've realized...
That's got to feel good, right?
And it was really about issues, so they went to get out. So, Mike Castle and I got along great. I mean, I wasn't going after him.
Right.
The chances of, you know, I was a sacrificial lamb for the party that year, quite honestly. So, he and I, I learned a lot watching him, and you realize how much of an impact you can make in politics, but so much more if you can get in there and actually do legislation. So, for me, I've always run for the legislative side.
Okay.
I like that. You can make a difference, a big difference in people's lives. And you realize how much impact you have with the legislation, decisions you make, and when you fight for them, for those issues, that it really changes lives. And it affects people in county government, really, at the lowest level. Like, it affects their everyday life.
Right.
More than, you know, if it's a state level, a little bit, you know, the same thing, but a little bit less. County provides all the services, you're, I don't know how much you know about county government, but we do, the parks and libraries, the sewers. Our biggest cost is the police. You know, just a wide...
Which are actually, aren't they county, county police, aren't those sheriffs?
Aren't they called sheriffs? No, we have a sheriff's office, and they do deal more with, you know, selling the properties that are repossessed.
Okay.
And so, they deal more with that. Our county police is our biggest cost for the county.
Okay.
People don't always associate us with that, but that is our biggest cost. The other thing we have a big impact on is land use. You know, how much open space, how much, how many parks?
Yes.
How many developments is it going to go in there? The density, like, how many townhomes are we going to put there? Or how many houses in a small area?
Yes.
And then that works, you know, also affects, you know, the sewers. Where do we put the sewers?
Yes.
Now, not a lot of people talk about the sewers too much, but let me tell you.
That's an important...
It is a big deal, and it really impacts where we put the sewers, and where we're putting them now in our comprehensive plan south of the canal. That's where the money goes. Because where you put the sewers is where the houses are built.
Yes.
And it's worth more. So, you're going to, it really impacts so much more than people think.
I really had at some point wanted to put myself a lovely little double-wide trailer here in North Wilmington, and that's impossible.
Because of the moratorium on the septic systems.
Yes.
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 And I fought against it. It had to be, I wanted it to be modified. We did stop it for going in permanently.
Yes.
For the time being, and primarily one of the things I fought for, which doesn't affect the people in the city as much, but really, the farmers. Imagine you're a farmer, and you have all your money, and you're nest egg. Your retirement is your land.
Yes.
Well, when we do that, their land instantly goes down in value.
Well, whoever owns the land actually has the money. The land is, so it's worth the money, yes.
Most of them don't have, they're not wealthy.
Yes.
Their money is in the value of the land, should they ever sell it. And when you're having less, their children are not going into the farming like they was.
Yes.
And so, some of them, and they're, most of them are actually fairly, you know, in their 60s, 70s, you know, and the children are coming in.
They're going to fare very well for them.
Yeah, and we were losing our, and it was really bad. We were losing our farmers. For instance, it was a dairy, you know, and I'm talking about this, not as many city issues, but this is important to know, that we lost a dairy farm because he couldn't afford to stay in business because the taxes were too high. And I had asked to have them lowered, if could we lower them for the farmers. You can make sure that we save that open space, that we have that, and some of the farmers that are growing crops, because we want fresh food.
Yes.
And produce available to us, because they are bringing them to our farmers' markets and making sure that those in the city have fresh foods and vegetables that are grown locally.
It sounds like it really makes sense to me. This is my first year.
And I didn't expect to talk about this, quite honestly.
This is my first year in politics, and I'm still learning. I'm still learning who does what and which way it goes, and da-da-da. But I'm definitely a voter. And so, for me, it doesn't matter if you're Republican or you're Democrat. I want to know what are the platforms that people stand on, and whether or not those are the kinds of people that I can, I can take at face value to trust them. Okay? We have this thing in America about politicians and the word "trust." They do not go hand in hand. Okay? And for me, I need to know that I can trust the politician, the public servant, who is looking out for my well-being and my families and my posterity. So, that is important to me. The land, how it's managed, farmers for fresh food, that's very important, but I'm sure...
What if we needed to grow food?
Yeah, I'm sure there's an opposition on the other side that would say a reason why we shouldn't lower the taxes on farmers. Like, I don't know what that person would think.
There's not that many, let me tell you, there's not that many farmers left in Newcastle County.
Yes.
So, it's not that big of a number.
Right.
It's actually, we've, I forget exactly what it was, but it wasn't that big of a number at all. We've lost many of the farms in Newcastle County.
And see, that's where it becomes money over life, where it's more important to make this money off of these people with the taxes, even though you're draining them dry and they'll have nothing left to them. And their children, like you said, if their children don't take over, then there goes...
So, what is going to happen is, when you push them to that limit, they're going to sell the farm to a developer.
Right. And that's what a developer wants.
And that's, so you don't have the farm. So, I want to make sure we protect our farms. There's not that many left, and I think it's really important to protect them. I want to share a quick fact with you that I learned through this process, and I do a lot of research.
Okay.
So, when I vote on legislation, you know, you should know that I have done a lot of research. I've talked to everybody.
Okay.
And one of the things I found out, and it was through some of the farmers, and they sent me actually a video, that I found out that the best soil in the world, there's only 2% of the land that's considered the best soil for growing crops in the world.
Okay.
We have, or, you know, 5%, I'm sorry, that's wrong, 10%, 2% of it is in Delaware. And it happened because during the Ice Age, the glaciers came, we got lucky in Newcastle County, and it's called the levels. It is the best soil for growing crops in the entire world, 2%.
Really?
How many people know that in Newcastle County?
Yeah, I would have never known that.
And it's...
In little old Delaware.
Little old Delaware. So, the further south you get, the soil isn't quite as good. So, it's up here in Newcastle County, and it's right around, you know...
Grow me a tomato.
Right, you know, like, north of Wilmington, it starts, and it's a strip of land, and it goes like through the Middletown area. And what are we doing? We're pushing the farmers out, and they're building developments on it. Now, those people, if they have flowers in their garden, they're growing like crazy.
Right.
So, they're pretty lucky, but I think...
But the farmers would do better with that land.
But we really need to save that, that soil, and make sure that we are saving that for open space, and really being aware of it, and making sure people know that.
So, what else, what else, what's another one of your passionate platforms? I can see that that one is something very important to you. What else is something that, if you're re-elected to continue to hold that seat as county president, what is the first thing that you want to do better?
What I want to do better, and I need to do better, is tell people how much I do. I work seven days a week. I start getting calls 6:30, 7:30 in the morning. My phone doesn't stop ringing usually till 10:30, 11:30 sometimes. Some people know that I love work late, and they call me late because they're working late. So, they know that they'll get me. Seven days a week, weekends, holidays. First, on day one, I forwarded all of my phone calls to my cellphone. So, I take the calls as they come in. If I'm in a meeting, I will call you back afterwards.
Right.
I've done that for four years. This isn't about an election time. I've done this the whole four years. What you don't have as much time to do is to put it out on social media.
Okay.
I had to make choices. Do you help people and spend that time, or do you promote yourself? You know, for instance, the county executive can do a lot of that, because he can do all the photo ops and, you know, the ribbon cuttings, because he has, you know, 2,000 people helping him.
Yes.
The president council doesn't have that.
Okay.
In the council, we have a very small staff. They don't do that. We don't make that available.
I thought they gave everyone a secretary.
Everybody gets, supposedly gets an aide.
Okay.
And they tried to, well, they did. They took mine away, because I didn't do some things they wanted. And I decided I could have fought for it and filed a lawsuit, could have done that and spent the last four years, you know, fighting them. But what I decided to do instead is save that money, $400,000, and make sure that I did it myself to grow and learn as a president. So, I do everything, I, every aspect, I have grown and learned so much.
I applaud you on that. I certainly can respect that.
Because you really, I don't feel that they need it. They each have a 12th of the district. I have the whole county. And if you can't do a 12th of the district...
Yes.
On your own, without having your assistant or your aide do everything, you know, maybe you need to...
So, let's, I want to get to this. So, there's been a little trouble, there's been a little trouble back at the ranch, okay? The county council. There've been some rifts or tiffs, I guess is a nice way to say it. And so, I guess moving forward, recognizing that I've already interviewed some of the other candidates who are vying for that seat, and I would have to ask you, what do you think is the number one thing that you need to do in order to build and work with your co-council members?
And it's what I did. And when I went in there, I had made a point of making sure that I included everybody. I always have. I've treated everybody with dignity, respect, every time, always. And some of the council members weren't as kind. What I did, I did my homework and talked to all the other presidents preceding me, and they had apparently attacked all of them coming in, some worse than others.
Okay.
And the two women fared the worst. In fact, when they shared their experiences with me, both Karen Peterson and Stephanie Hansen, I thought, oh my God, like, I'm not treated bad at all compared to you. To what they went through, they actually were crying.
This is a, this is a, you know, for lack of a better word and sounding really fancy, this is a board of older white gentlemen that probably all of them smoked cigars or something, the old boys, the good old boys. These are the good old boys.
This was the good old boys, and here's a...
And then you've got, and then a woman is coming in, here are the good old boys, and you got a woman coming in, and now she wants to make changes and do things different and create change, and they're not, they're not feeling that. They're not, they're not understanding that.
Transparency, accountability, openness, no, they weren't feeling that.
At all.
At all. And they really, really went after me.
Okay.
And then, they accused me of my, and had my aide say that I harassed her. Well, I find out that one of the councilwomen had told her she could get a half a million dollars if she sued the county. And, you know, and so, she's talking about, so we never, she never got an attorney. She never did sue us.
Right.
It was a political witch hunt.
Yes.
And it had nothing, I had never done anything to her but be kind. And so, when the report was done, it said, "No smoking gun," because it never happened. Then, after that, now, the investigation's over, no smoking gun.
Right.
She doesn't have an attorney, so she's not suing me because she knows she can't.
Right.
But my attorney was able to get a report on her. She had, was a criminal. She had stolen $50,000 each from two separate companies, was still on probation. They had never, the county never did a background check on her. They never checked, as required by law, checked her resume. So, when you look at her resume, and I was able to match it up with the report I got, she was in jail, where she says she did some of the jobs. So, this was...
That's very interesting, to say the least.
And so, and then all of a sudden, it was crickets. The council people, they backed off, she wasn't coming back, we're not doing anything. So, but they don't tell that part. That part wasn't in the press.
Yes.
Nobody covered that.
Yes.
You know, that this, that it just went dead.
So, you get this really bad rep. You've got the good old boys and their cigars sitting on the board and kind of, you know, poking at you, poking at you a little bit. You're the woman, you're the new person on the block. And how is that working out for you now? I mean, how can you get any work done with that type of, with that type of cloud hanging over your head?
Rochelle, what I decided, I, they, I decided they were not going to change who I was at my core. I was not going to become like that. I was not going to emulate that in order to fight back. So, what I did is just consistency and be who you are. You go in, and when I first started, the council people, not only were they attacking me, they were attacking each other, they were attacking the people from the administration coming in and constituents. I mean, this is all on tape. Anybody can, you know, check it out.
Okay.
And I, so, I was consistently nice. As you set boundaries, that you were, you were not to personally attack anybody in my meetings. I addressed it, but calmly, kindly, and treated them with respect. Over time, and I did, quite honestly, I didn't know if this would work, but after about a year and a half almost, it just changed. You know, it was, it changed, and they started not doing that. And you can go back and look over, you know, or listen, I guess we weren't doing streaming yet.
Mama, mama say you catch more bees with honey than you do with vinegar.
It was...
So, being nice to them and just being polite and respectful of yourself helps you to command the respect of those. Maybe they just wanted to poke at you and pick at you.
They respect you, but they're great, you're...
Just the same, you know, you've got to get hard skin. So, if they're poking at you, and they're picking on you, and they're harassing you, if that's true, then it's only to get you to toughen up your skin so that you can really do the job that you set out to do for county council president.
I believe God has a hand in this, and He's going to toughen you up for what He is in store for you for later.
Okay.
And I needed to get tough, get a tough skin.
All right.
And just continue to do what I believe to be right, because that doesn't say anything about me. When you hear what they're saying, that's about them.
Yes.
That's not...
But what does say something about you is your response to it.
To it.
That's what says something about you.
You choose how you're going to respond to that.
Yes.
And, you know, I have to say, this is a very different council now. When I came in, and I, you know, I, I will never forget when I, I did my homework at the time, and so, for the year before, when I was running, before I got elected, I went to the council meetings. And I remember going into a budget meeting, and they were very short. I mean, if you didn't get there in the beginning, you sort of missed it.
Right.
So, I was seven minutes late because I got stuck talking to someone getting out of the elevator, and they were congratulating themselves on how fast they got it done.
In seven minutes, the meeting was over.
Meeting's done, started, over, done. And so...
And budget, we're talking money. No one can talk about money in seven minutes and be done.
And so, there was no, and I thought, this isn't right. This is where we should have some discussion. Now, this didn't, it wasn't like I talked about what we were doing, but over time, as you do the research, you talk about that, the discussions started getting longer, more interesting, more, what was the conversation...
The content.
By the council members, we're getting more involved. And then we had the election two years ago.
Okay.
And we got two new council members that were more similar to open government transparency.
Yes.
And boy, did that accelerate things. So, now that you're seeing a very different council.
Good.
We have meetings now that are hours long, great discussion, and we have more involvement by constituents than ever. One of the last meetings we had, we had 90 people, and on our Zoom meeting, listening in. For a land use meeting the other day, we had over 40. Now, land use meetings aren't the most interesting meetings.
Right.
But you were listening.
Right.
You know, and so, this is really important, that over my administration, and it's not by, I'm out there saying, "You have to do this, I want to see this, I'm leading in this." It's by example. It's just doing it.
Yes.
And you, the change happens because you're there.
Yes.
It wouldn't happen with somebody else. It's because of the person you are in that place. And then when we got two new, other new ones, it also changed a little bit more and accelerated that change. And the discussion, we're having great discussions. I mean, we just, CRODO legislation, I was a cosponsor on that, addresses, CRODO wanted a permit to expand, and CRODO, you probably heard about, there was a release of toxic fumes with a bridge that was shut down with that. And the residents in the area, you know, really take on the brunt of that because of the cancer clusters that you have.
Yes, that much I'm, yes, aware of, is the cancer in Delaware. Delaware has so much cancer. What is that all about? I don't understand. Hold on one second. You're listening to Rochelle Wilson and the interview at the Political Power Hour with County Council President Karen Hartley-Nagel, joining us tonight in the studio and answering the questions. This is about getting to know the candidates so that you can make a conscious decision when you get to the voting polls. So, I'm sorry, please go on, yeah, talking about...
So, we have the cancer clusters.
Yeah.
So, you saw for me a vote to not, for a resolution that would go to the state to not give them the permit. You know, that same night, we had the legislation for the police and chokeholds, which is now being revised and will come up at the next council meeting, which we'll be signing on to as a cosponsor.
Now, what is your vote on that? Are we, are we going to stop the chokeholds?
Yeah, not only is my vote going to be yes, but I'm going to be a cosponsor.
Okay. Okay. I do, I did notice that you were on the, was it the Coalition for Open Government? I love that.
Yeah, I was a family member.
I love that. Yes, transparency, I want to know what people are doing, don't be secretive, hiding things. I don't like that.
I work with all the still, the open government people, and it is really important to me that we are open. I was, I was a cosponsor on the legislation to do the live streaming of our committee meetings and our council meetings, and then also a cosponsor on the legislation, how we were going to make that happen.
Okay.
So, our first meeting was yesterday, where it was livestreamed.
Okay, good.
Even though we're doing Zoom meetings...
Yes.
You know, we still went forward with that legislation.
Okay.
That was important to get done. I also have legislation coming up that is going to make sure that our TV station, NCTV, that everybody in the council, on our row offices, that our ethics commission, has an opportunity to do a show. So, they all have equal time, and it rotates. So, nobody always has the best time.
Right.
Everybody gets a say, every department, because you, we want to make sure that the public, I do, want to make sure the public knows what we're doing, from those people who are doing it.
Yes.
Not reinterpreted.
That's accountability.
Just from, you know, the administration.
Yes.
And told through their eyes.
Yes.
But from the people that are doing it. And then they can get feedback to do better, to do different things, and make sure that we are always evolving and always letting the public know, and in making sure they are communicating back with us.
So, I want to go into this question next, which is about the chokeholds and about something, you know, a lot of buzz is going on now about defunding the police. I have my own thoughts and viewpoints on that. What are your thoughts about that? Should we defund the police? Which in this case would be the county, for you, the county police. Do you think that's a viable solution? Or do you think retraining them is a better solution?
What I did first is the research, and I reached out, I want to hear from the people. I got thousands of emails. I mean, I couldn't find emails, I was getting so many emails coming in.
Right.
And so, I started calling them. Anybody who had a phone number, I called them. I immediately, within four days, I set up a webinar and I asked our police chief to come on. And I said, Colonel Bond, now you're, they're going to be able to ask any question. And there you go, okay, with this, as answering any question as they ask it.
Yes.
He said, yes. I said, I'll be on. I asked the county executive, so Matt joined me. And the three of us went on for two hours. We answered questions mostly by Colonel Bond about anything that they asked. And I made sure that, you know, that it was, you know, everybody was included, that as many want to participate can. Um, we will probably do that sometime in the future as well. But Colonel Bond, you know.
Those are the kinds of things that you have to put on social media so that we can see them. So that we, the constituents, we, the public can actually chime in on that. Like, uh, that's something that I would be interested in watching and listening to and perhaps even engaging in a question. But there's, there's lots of people, constituents in Newcastle County that, uh, would be interested in something like that.
You can just listen and, and.
Yes, and take notes. I'm taking notes.
Why it was really important is because, and I have my, my challengers that are coming, you know, want my seat.
Yes.
There are a lot of, they're saying things like, we need more social programs. And that's what, when I made those phone calls about defunding the police, I'll tell you, most of them didn't actually, when you got down to what do you really want? What do you want to say? They didn't want to actually fund the police. They wanted to put more money, less money to the police and more money towards social programs is really what they're looking at. But we do that in Newcastle County. We already do it. And what I realized.
When have, when did you start doing that?
Years ago, many, like, we've always done it. What we're not doing, and that's what I told Colonel Bond while we did that webinar, we have to do a better job letting people know what we are doing for that.
So you're saying that the county police are not using the chokeholds, the knee in the neck, kill George Floyd, they're not doing that.
Council meeting because I'm sure there will be a robust discussion, you know, on that. Um, and what we do and what we don't. And there has been two really intense discussions on that already in council meetings.
Okay. Now, what about, uh, there's something else that's coming along too. And I don't know if it was county or city, but I think it's great for the whole state, the whole nation. And that is, uh.
I want to interrupt one thing. That doesn't mean that we are not, we are perfect or that we couldn't do even better or more. And we are always open to doing that. And I know this police chief, he has said that many times. And when I've spoken to him, he is doing that.
Well, accountability. If I see a county officer with his knee in someone's neck, then I have a right to get involved. And I don't remember the name of what that's called, you know, see it, get involved. What's it called? If you see it, you can help. There's a name for it and I can't think of the name of it. But basically, if I see a police officer putting his knee in someone's neck or doing the chokeholds, I can tell that officer, you have to stop. Stop doing that. You're, you can't do that. I can actually intercede for the person who's in the chokehold or who has, uh, the knee on their neck.
Right.
Have you, have you heard anything about that? I mean, is that something?
Haven't heard that any county police have done that. And I understand that they're not allowed to do that. So, and so we're going to codify it.
Okay.
So we're, it's not enough to have it as a rule and that they're not allowed to do that. We're going to make sure it's in ordinance.
That I can get involved and tell the police officer, don't do that.
I don't, I have to look at the language. It's just coming out and it was, they created, wrote a substitute. So I have to read that actually tonight when I get home.
Yeah, I need to find the actual name of it.
It came out, yeah.
It's a cute little perky name, you know, like, if you see it, tell them to stop. It's a cute little perky name.
See it, say it.
See it, say it, something like that, right? But basically, the bottom line is, you can't, you can't do that.
There's nobody on council that would be, you know, would say that was okay.
Okay.
And I, I know them all pretty well enough after being the president. And you, you get to know what the council, what their positions are.
Yes.
And I could say with confidence, none of them would be supportive of that. So.
So, uh, we just have a little bit of time left. And, uh, in this time, I would like to add, would like to ask you two questions. First, what, uh, is something that you're very passionate about that you want to see happen? If you're reelected to sit in this seat again, what is one of the things that you are definitely going to put your foot down and you want to make that happen? And then how can people continue to engage you? I know you have a Facebook page, so we can go there. That would be under Karen Hartley Nagle.
Karen Hartley Nagle. Yes, I have a Facebook page, Twitter, Instagram, website. Um, I also am creating a website because I realized people are having a hard time finding our legislation.
Yes.
So I'm working on that. That'll probably go live in the next couple of days.
Okay.
Um, because one of the things when I came in, uh, that I was able to do, all of my votes reflect what I said I was going to do. So, I mean, it's not me just saying it. All you have to, I will give you a brochure from before. You look, all my votes are right in line with what I said I was going to do. I kept my promises to the public.
That's important.
I'm a, I'm a president that focuses on the people. So I do a lot of constituent service and a whole lot of constituent service. And I want to continue to do more. I think it's important for us to know what legislation to do and how it affects people. You have to be in tune with them. You have to be listening and you have to work on that. So there's a number, can't say there's just one thing. There's a number of pieces of legislation and things I want to do when I'm reelected. And it doesn't happen overnight. So four years isn't enough. You need eight in order to complete those things you're doing. And we have done, come so far with this council, you just have to listen to them where they were four years ago and before I took office to where they are now.
Well, the good news is you're getting along now with people. People are getting along with you. A lot of the turmoil, the dust has settled and you can get the work done. You can get the work done because it's very hard to get the work done when you've got people, you know, there's a whole lot of tifling going on.
Difference in the mindset they have as well. So there's a shift that happens. And I couldn't say the day that it happened, but a time period when it happened. And there, everybody is focused on helping, really focused on the county and the people and moving forward. And, you know, I, I want to continue to do more of that. I want to see our county thrive where we're bringing more jobs in. And I could tell you, nobody does more research than me. And you need someone like me in there because I am not like, like, I'm, I'm told often, you're not like all elected officials. I, I believe that there's a separation of power, which it's supposed to be. So I'm not a rubber stamp for the step, for the administration. But I'm open to listening and I do whatever you have to say, Matt, talk to me. Let me know. And I will do my own research too. And most times I will agree with you, but there's going to be the twenty, twenty-five percent I don't. And I'm going to tell you why I don't.
Right.
You know, and so you're going to know why. And I want to make sure that we're doing the best thing for the public. The worst thing that we could have is someone who's going to be a rubber stamp for the administration that the county executive has handpicked. Because that means that you don't have an independent council. You don't have someone to go to that's going to fight for you, that's going to fight for you if the administration doesn't believe what you do or, or has a different opinion. So it's really important and I believe it even born now than when I took office because now I've experienced it. Matt, as a president, you are, you represent the whole county. Each of the council members only represent one twelve. They need things from the county executive, but I'm independent. I don't need anything. I can say, I can say what needs to be said, but you have to have a president that has the courage to do that. When everybody is saying no, or the, the council people are saying something different and you're speaking the truth and you're saying it, and some of them wish they could, but they can't. Right? And so you need, you absolutely need that. And, and I have that courage. I've consistently exhibited that. I have voted, you know, a, a no when everybody was voting yes. For instance, the Delaware Board of Trade, I was right in that. And I, I did my research, I laid out my argument and the county executive did not move forward with it. His attorneys came up to me and said, you were right, you were right. So they didn't, even though the council voted yes, they didn't move forward. And so these, these things are really important to do. And, you know, my challengers won't do that. They're not going to do that. They're very close with the county executive, um, and which is why he's supporting that. Right? Well, if you're county executive, you want someone who's going to do everything you want. You don't want opposition.
Well, it depends on what it is that he wants to do would, would matter to me in terms of whether or not I'm going to give him what he wants. What do you want to do like about the land and the farmers and the things that you talked about? These are important.
You will see me very much involved, doing the research, putting it out there. Um, you've seen more council people doing that now, but it wasn't happening when I came in. And you want that discussion. You want to be heard. I also have had count, I have had, um, constituents come in and they weren't being heard. The county executive wouldn't table a piece of legislation where it's called TID legislation that affected land use. And so the constituents came in and it was like four attorneys and they're like, they, they wouldn't table it. They weren't going to be heard. And so what I had them do is write a floor amendment with me. So they had input into the problems they saw. They got to help draft the legislation. That was put forward on a floor amendment, first time that's been done. And they said, oh my God, they voted it down, but we got, we got in what we wanted to say.
I like that, I like that, I like that a lot. I think that more constituents, we, the people, we, the people should have more say so and involvement in our own laws and legislation. I think that's absolutely amazing. You're listening to Rochelle Wilson interview the incumbent County Council President Karen Hartley Nagel, a woman that is standing for, uh, what she believes in. She's not a yes girl, she's not a no girl. She's going to stand up for transparency, open government and keep her promises. So you want to be able to follow her on her Facebook page. Um, keep abreast of what she is doing so that you can make your decision on who you want to vote for. You know the other candidates as well as, uh, now you know the incumbent. And we definitely would love to have you back on the show again. Uh, you know, after all of this has all been said and done, we would love to have you come back and tell us about the experience. And what, what did it do for you? What did you learn from it? How did you grow from this election experience?
If I can bring up one last point, I don't want to leave without saying this. You can check out any of my votes online and, and on the website I've just created. And also with the grants that I'm giving. It says a world about, you know, what is important to me, um, helping those that can't help themselves, not the big charities, but the local people that it really means something. There was a little bit of money we can give to them if that matters. And, you know, which is, you know, I'm, I'm providing it for those that are helping the homeless, the children. Uh, most of it affect the African-American community in Wilmington and throughout our county. And I've chose to focus on that for a couple of reasons. But one of the main ones is we have two African-Americans on council that represent a lot of the city. But the other tw, the other, let's see, let's see, ten do not, they're white. And so, and they're in a different area, so they're not focused on that. So most of, a lot of the grants I can give out and some of the legislation I can do, I focus on those that I believe really need that support and help.
Yes.
And, and support the African-Americans that are on council. So you almost always see me vote with them.
Okay.
And support them and also to bring in, in hiring more minorities. So, which I've really focused on as well.
I was about to say that we definitely need more jobs for our young people in the county. We need that. And if ever there was any people who needed help across the board, it is our black and brown and golden community people.
And that we, I have focused on with economic development and jobs. We are seeing more of that, but we're not seeing enough more high paying jobs and, and, and bigger companies coming into stay.
Okay.
Which we really need to make sure that is happening.
Yes, and we need to give them good paying jobs. How are they going to get up out of the, the gutter if they don't have a good paying job? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, you heard it right here on the Political Power Hour with Rochelle Wilson, interviewing the incumbent County Council President Karen Hartley Nagel. If you want to find out more about her, check out her website, her webpage, of course, always Facebook. And there you can find out her record, what she has done and what her platform moving forward, what she would like to do.